You guys ready? Okay, I'll call the order of Sparks City Council Meeting of October fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. With a roll call, please.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Byde, absent. Dare.
Here.
Acting City Attorney Sendal.
Here.
City Manager Kurtz.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you'll stand for Pastor Lee Nish in United Methodist Church, you'll do the invocation. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you. Let us pray. Gracious God, how grateful we are to be able to call Nevada home as this month we celebrate our common interests and common residence. We are grateful also to have Mayor Ron with us and just ask your continued blessings upon him. We pray for healing, we pray for wholeness. We also pray for all of those who are both celebrating Columbus Day this day and also Indigenous Peoples' Day, that we as the council are mindful of the contributions of all peoples who have come here, whether indigenous, with Washoe County and the tribe, or whether people like us or Johnny Come Latelys, that we are all welcome here and that we all have the opportunity to contribute and to flourish. So we ask your blessings upon this council. We ask your blessings on all that is before us as the conversations ensue. May we listen with our hearts as well as our heads and may the decisions that we make be prosperous to all of the community that we serve. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. If you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, Mr. Anderson. What did you leave us?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm gonna open up the public comment period. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? I don't have any cards. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Five point one, approve of the agenda. Anybody wanna pull anything or?
Yes.
Could we move nine point three up before presentations?
Before the announcements of presentations?
We've got a whole bunch of Rotarians here that I'm sure need to get back to work. Well.
They're probably thanking you by now, oh my God.
I'm looking around, maybe not all of them have to get back to work.
Okay, we have a motion with one change. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please vote.
Can I second it?
Absolutely. I think, I have a feeling you just got even with me on something. Okay, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Abbott. Okay, we'll move on to six point one, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks City Council Meeting for September twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. Mr. Anderson.
Move to approve minutes.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second. Mr. Abbott.
I'll second this one again.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And to you Paul.
Oh.
Thank you.
We're right. Thought my motion did it.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we'll move down to nine point three.
Thank you Chris.
Let me see if I can get that for you, Chris. Consideration, discussion, and possible acceptance of grant funding from the Sparks Rotary in the amount of eighty thousand dollars to assist in the design and construction costs associated with Sparks Marina, All Abilities Playground. Mr. Cobb.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm excited and pleased to be for you this evening for possible discussion, consideration, and acceptance of a grant from our Sparks Rotary in the amount of eighty thousand dollars towards the design and construction of an All Abilities Playground. It's a Sparks Marina. This is an extremely exciting project for the City of Sparks, looking into this more and more. We only have two of these parks in our region, one existing at Pawara in the City of Sparks and Dick Taylor Park in Reno. This will be an exciting project to add to our complement, especially at the Marina, with all the functions we already have there, with the Veterans Memorial we have going. You have the Mark Wellman Adventure Day, our Sparks, the Fishing Day, and numerous walks that occur here. I do have members from the Sparks Rotary here this evening. I think one of them would like to come up as well and discuss this before you take a vote, and I'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Okay. Who wants to speak for the Rotary Club?
That would be Mr. Mike Day.
All right.
Welcome.
Hi.
Hi there.
Is this on? I don't have to touch or toot but anything?
We can hear you.
All right, very good, thanks. I'm Michael Day, I'm president of the Sparks Rotary Club, and we, if, can I ask for our Sparks Rotarians to stand so you can at least see who's here? Could all the Sparks Rotarians please stand?
And actually, we have several Rotarians up here on the dais.
Yeah, I know, they didn't stand either, but that's okay. But we are on behalf of Sparks Rotary, I am here to offer eighty thousand dollars towards the planning and development of this Marina at the Sparks Marina Playground, which will be a all-inclusive or inclusive playground. And I've been working with Don Welsh too, who upon release mentioned and recognized, he's been really the driving force for this project. So we are extremely excited about the possibilities and the completion of this project, and it is our honor to be able to offer eighty thousand dollars for this program. And Chris has done a super job, so I want to thank him too for his work on this project.
We want to thank you for the eighty thousand dollars, and Ed, I'm sure you want to say a few words here.
You know, this is, this is kind of overwhelming in a way. It's, it's, we've never seen this kind of donation from, number one, from a private charitable organization for the City of Sparks, but as a Sparks Rotarian, this is, makes my heart very proud. My buddy's over here, he started crying, so he's gonna make me start crying. But the bottom line is, you guys, you've done such great work, have worked so hard at it, and we at the City of Sparks are greatly appreciative. It's allowed us to think a little bigger for this playground, and I think we're gonna talk about at the end of the meeting some ways we can maybe speed this thing up for you, because we want to see that out there and people enjoying it. And as Don was telling us some of his stories prior to the meeting about his daughter who's special needs, that it's, what it does for the kids is overwhelming, and if you're there to see it, it's a pretty fun thing to see. So good job Sparks Rotarians.
Absolutely.
And it was pretty awesome. And then we're gonna have some help from our president of the Sparks Centennial Sunrise, Christopher Dare, in some of the labor and also upkeep on that park as we go forward.
Absolutely, so we are partners with, if, sorry, didn't mean to jump in on.
Please, go ahead.
No, just that we are, I wanted to point that out, that we are partnering with Sparks Centennial Sunrise Club in the, for future maintenance and upkeep repair with Rotarians at Workday in the future. So we are really excited that together we can be able to do this.
Mr. Dare.
I want to say, just even as Ed was sharing, it kind of brings some of our hearts together in the sense of how much we care for Sparks and what we do for City Council, but then also as a Rotarian, and it's awesome to be able to walk in this and stand together. Thank you for taking the time to put together the details to make sure we get it done right, and I wanted to say that real loud. Chris has done a great job, our parks and recs done a great job, but really Rotarians, thank you, and it just shows, what's happened at that Marina really becomes the gem of our city in a lot of ways. There's just so, everything going on in so many parts of our city, but we're excited. Thank you all, we really do appreciate it, and as far as City Sparks go, we're happy to accept money from anybody.
You know, why don't we do this, Julie? If we can get all the Rotarians in front of the dais here, we'll stand up behind them and maybe, and then you can hold up that check please?
Yeah.
And then get a picture, we, you, go ahead Chris.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to vote to set first?
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. Okay, wait, they gotta, they gotta vote.
Hang on one second, I jumped the gun again.
Controversial vote.
Okay. All right. You just want to get back to work, Bill, I know you. Okay, is it, any further discussion? Okay, looking for a motion please to accept the eighty thousand dollar donation? Mr. Lawson.
I'd like to move that we accept the eighty thousand dollar donation from the Sparks Rotary Club.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second, Mr. Dare.
I'd like to second that, please.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thanks, Chris. Seeing none, please vote.
Donald saved me in the nick of time.
It passes unanimously. Okay, let's get that picture taken.
Should we jump?
Stand on your chair.
Yeah.
Down the table, Chris.
I'll go right here. There we go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, I gotta get back to work.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Gammick, I know you.
Don't get a speeding ticket getting back to work, please.
We know how to clear a room.
When you do a check like that, that's a lot of money for a little Rotary Club.
Okay, we'll move on to announcements, presentations, recognition items, and items of special interest. Seven point one, proclamation for Alpha One Awareness Month. Is there somebody here to accept this? Okay, I'll read the proclamation anyway, and I'll do a better job than Mr. Abbott did last year.
Read all the words.
I'm going, I'm gonna read all the words. Wait a minute, gotta clear my eyes here. You're gonna make me cry here. Alpha One is one of the most common serious, serious hereditary disorders in the world and can result in life-threatening lung disease in adults and liver disease in both children and adults. And whereas Alpha One has been identified in nearly all populations and ethnic groups, and whereas Alpha One is widely underdiagnosed and misdiagnosed, and fewer than ten percent of those predicted to have Alpha One have been diagnosed, and whereas it is important to increase awareness and detection of this serious hereditary and misdiagnosed disorder, and whereas during the month of November, a nationwide awareness campaign will take place throughout the country to educate the public as well as the medical community on Alpha One detection and treatment for those affected by this condition. Now therefore, I, Ronald Lee Smith, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim November two thousand and nineteen, Alpha One Awareness Month. So. I don't know why you had so many problems with that last year. Okay, we'll move on. Seven point two, presentation of Nevada Gold Star Families. Come on down Chief. Sharon, Dave, welcome.
Mayor, members of the council, Pete Crawl, your police chief, here today with a special guest, Mr. Sharon Oren of the Nevada Gold Star Family Memorial. He is here to present us today with some photographs of officers and participants at the grand opening of the Northern Nevada Veterans Memorial Home.
Thank you Chief. First of all, there's also David Sues over here, who is my board member as well. On June twenty-ninth, we had unveiling of the Gold Star Family Memorial in the Veterans Home on thirty-six Ballabon Way here in the City of Sparks. Before the event, we had a couple of very important guests who were, besides our Gold Star Families, of course, which were two Medal of Honor recipients, Woody Herschel, the oldest living World War II Medal of Honor recipient, who started the project, as well as Donald Doc Ballard, who was Medal of Honor recipient from Vietnam. As always, and I want to say because it's not taken for granted, City of Sparks was there representing with their mayor, city council members, like in every veteran-related event that we've been part of, which is amazing to see you guys there. And also, we had a lot of help from City of Sparks PD and Fire, who were there on their own time and dime, helping us, keeping everybody safe, and representing the City of Sparks and honoring our Gold Star Families. For that, we want to thank you today, and David and I made one for the Fire Battalion. Donald Doc Ballard actually dedicated and signed it for you as a thank you for the, I know the fire chief is here, I think it was only a second ago, want you to come over here, and we also have one for the PD, same thing, signed and dedicated by Medal of Honor Doc, Donald Doc Ballard. And as a small token of our appreciation for what you guys do every day for your community, for your veterans, thank you for what you guys do for us and for the veterans in this. And since the Rotarians already left, but I know someone's still in the room, we're still looking for donations for the memorial, just saying this. Oh, definitely.
Does he have a presentation? No presentation. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Good seeing you guys, thank you. Thanks for your support. Okay, seven point three, presentation, Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Come on down. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for having me here this afternoon. My name is Jessica Forbes-Guerrero, I'm with Ecology and Environment Incorporated, and we're working with the county and regional partners to update the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Like I just mentioned, this is a regional plan, so it's Washoe County, also the City of Sparks, City of Reno, Reno Sparks, Indian Colony, and the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe, as well as the Chucky Meadows Fire Protection District, the North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District, and then the Chucky River Flood Management Authority, all working together on this plan. And if you've ever been involved in a hazard mitigation planning effort before, you know these plans are updated on a five-year cycle. They're necessary to enable the community to be eligible for pre- or post-disaster hazard mitigation funding, but it's also the commitment of the community to take solid steps to reduce risks from hazards for residents and for property within the city. So this plan, the major push of the plan is to develop that mitigation strategy that consists of concrete actions. The planned vision and the planned goals are all targeted towards that mitigation strategy. So these are, let me back up and say, at the beginning of the planning process, we worked with the mitigation planning team, which consists of representatives from all the regional partners working on this plan, to identify hazards that affect the region and also rank those hazards according to different parameters. So you'll see along the top row of that table, probabilities, so the likelihood that a hazard is going to occur, a hazard event, magnitude, the severity of that event or disaster, frequency, how often it's likely to occur, the onset is how much warning you have before something occurs, and duration is how long something lasts. And so you can see, these are ranked hazards for the region. There's not a whole lot of surprises, I mean, you'd see, expect to see wild and fire, flooding, earthquake up at the top. We also looked at man-made hazards, so criminal acts and terrorism, or things like transportation incidents, and then technological hazards, so energy emergency, more like power outages and other energy emergencies. In our data collection process, we relied a lot on the expertise of staff, so representatives of your cities and also the fire protection districts, people who are on the front lines of responding to and recovering from disasters, to let us know where these problem areas are, what areas are at risk. We also had an extensive mapping process of gathering information from federal, state, and local databases in order to map where these hazard areas are. And then through meetings like this one and community discussions, we've been gathering information from residents, local residents. And then our process of identifying strategies, so we started, like I mentioned, with this data collection effort, understanding the hazards that affect the region and where these hazards occur, and then once we had that understanding, we were able to identify problems that needed to be addressed. So, and through identifying those problems, we developed actions to address those issues. So for Sparks, for example, a lot of the development has occurred in North Sparks recently over the past few decades, in the Spanish Springs Valley, so two problems that were identified were response time for fire protection and then also evacuation. So two of our strategies then are to build an additional fire station to bring those response times down, and then also to come up with an evacuation plan. There are also strategies in Sparks Annex to the plan, so that annex that is specific to the city, dealing with flooding, dealing with earthquake hazards, and other hazards that have been identified as priorities for Sparks. And right now, we are in the process of putting together the draft plan, so our mitigation planning team is reviewing that plan now, and then in November, the draft plan will be released for public review. And at this point in the process, that's the best way to get involved, is to take a look at that plan when it's put up for review on the county website. We also have a community survey, there's the link right here, and absolutely feel free to take that community survey, and then my coworker Alyssa and I will be outside the chamber here for about half an hour after this presentation. If anyone has any questions they'd like to talk to us about, and we'll also leave some comment forms out there, so if anyone has any written comments they'd like to send, feel free to please fill out one of those forms, and my email is on there, you can send that to me.
Thank you. Questions, comments, Mr. Dare?
Does this help us if, say, we have one of these, when it comes to FEMA or any of this insurance things? The fact that we've done all this pre-work, do we have any kind of grant money that we get, or is this a fed, does this help us federally? What, where does this come into play and how does FEMA use any of this, or do they?
Right, so these hazard mitigation plans are requirements to be able to access that pre- and post-disaster mitigation funding. Yeah, so this is kind of like your ticket in if there were to be a disaster, and certainly we hope that doesn't happen, but this would show that, show FEMA that the city has done that baseline step of planning for hazards and identifying those projects, and that you have identified solutions to these problems to kind of let them know that you'll be able to manage the money.
Is there a certain amount of people you need to have through that, or just the fact that you have it? And I say that, do we need to help get this out to make sure we have enough people out of the City of Sparks to give you a survey, or how are we on that?
Yeah, so there is, there are requirements for the planning process, and the city has had representatives at each of our mitigation planning team meetings, and so that's really what FEMA wants to see, is that the city has been involved throughout the process. So certainly, as part of that documentation, we'll document any comments that we get on the draft plan, so to show like a robust review at the city level, that would be good. So yeah, if we do receive comments from anyone at the city, we'll include those in our record of the planning process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Abbott, is this a new plan, or is this an update to?
This is an update. Yeah, so this twenty twenty plan updates the twenty fifteen plan. I know there was a twenty ten plan, and I'm not sure what iterations may have come before twenty ten.
So like, those numbers that we looked at in the very beginning, are those based off current, like, I guess, how do we get those numbers? And are we getting better, or?
Yeah, so that's a good question. Let me see if I can, oops, go back. No, yes, okay, it's just gonna take me a minute. So those numbers are responses from members of the MPT, so they aren't objective per se.
Okay.
They're based on professional experience, and you do see over here the change in risk. So this is kind of the perceived change in risk over that five-year period between twenty fifteen and now. And so you see in some areas, like wild and fire, risk has increased, which you might expect because of increased development. Flooding has increased, but winter storms, things like that have decreased. And we do identify factors in the plan that have contributed to an increase or decrease in risk.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you so much for the report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Seven four, seven five, and seven six, Neil, you want to read all three of them?
Yes, sir. Seven four is three vacancies that we have on the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee. All three vacancies are for alternate positions. The first two are in wards two and three respectively, with both terms, I'm sorry, in wards two and four, with both terms ending in November of two thousand and twenty-two. And the middle position is in Ward three for an alternate member that would fill a partial term ending in November of twenty twenty. We're looking for members that are residents of the City of Sparks, can be anywhere in the city, we're certainly in their ideal conditions. Each of those positions is filled if you're a resident of that ward, but it's not strictly speaking requirement. We're also want to encourage high school students to participate. This is a great opportunity to get involved and learn about what's going on in the city. Seven five, the second one is the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, and we're looking for two alternate members there, one from Ward five that would fill a partial term ending in November of twenty twenty, and one in Ward two that would finish a partial term ending in November of twenty twenty-two. Applicants need to be resident of the City of Sparks and should preferably be over the age of fifty-five. And then last but not least, we're looking for two members to fill partial terms on our Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. Both terms would end November sixth of two thousand and twenty-one, and in terms of requirements, we're looking for people with a performing arts background or a visual arts background. For any of the seven positions that I reviewed today, you can, you would need to complete a community service application that's available either from the city clerk's office or online. If you want to access it online, you would go to the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us, click on Government, then Boards and Commissions, and Volunteering for a Sparks Board or Commission, fill out the online form and click Submit. Applications for the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee Meeting and the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee Meeting are due by the close of business on Friday, October eighteenth, and then for the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, those are due by the close of business on Friday, November first.
Thank you, sir. Okay, move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull one? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Dare?
Make a motion to accept consent items eight point one through eight point four.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second, Mr. Anderson?
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, nine point one, consideration and possible acceptance of a traffic safety grant in the amount of forty-six thousand dollars to participate in the State Nevada Department of Public Safety Office of Traffic Safety Twenty Twenty Joining Forces Program. Chief Crawl, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Smith, members of the council, Pete Crawl, your police chief for the record. Today, the agenda item I have before you is consideration and possible acceptance of a traffic safety grant, AC five six one six, in the amount of forty-six thousand dollars to participate in the State of Nevada Department of Public Safety Office of Traffic Safety Joining Forces Twenty Twenty Program. For approximately the last sixteen years, the Sparks Police Department has participated in the State of Nevada Office of Traffic Safety Joining Forces Program. This national award-winning program focuses on, excuse me, focuses on the state's participating agencies on cooperative enforcement during predetermined traffic enforcement events. You know these events typically as things like Click It or Ticket or specialized DUI enforcement campaigns. According to twenty seventeen statistics, speed contributes to one in every three fatal traffic accidents in the state of Nevada, and alcohol contributes to approximately one in every three point five fatal traffic accidents. If accepted, the forty-six thousand dollar grant would pay for eight hundred twenty-four hours of officer overtime to conduct targeted traffic enforcement. Of course, as always, the council has options, and the council can either accept the grant and participate in the Office of Traffic Safety Twenty Twenty Joining Forces Program, or could decline the grant and seek funding elsewhere. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson?
I'd like to approve the acceptance of the grant for forty-six thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second, Mr. Abbott?
I'll second that. I'll second that.
We have a motion. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, you're on nine point two as well, chief.
Yes, sir. Once again, Pete Crawl, your police chief. Mayor Smith, members of the council, this next agenda item before you is consideration and possible approval of an interlocal agreement, AC 5612, between the City of Reno on behalf of the Reno Police Department, Washoe County on behalf of the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, and the City of Sparks on behalf of the Sparks Police Department for management, for the management and disposition of the 2019 Justice Assistance Grant or JAG program award. The U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance is offering a 2019 Justice Assistance Grant program award collectively in the amount of $159,075 to the Reno Police Department, Washoe County Sheriff's Office, and Sparks Police Department. The Sparks Police Department's allocation of funding would be $31,815. And Washoe County and the City of Reno would each receive $63,630. The interlocal agreement identifies participating agencies within the grant, establishes the City of Reno as the fiscal agent and responsible party for all grant reporting during the program, period of October 1st, 2018 to September 30th, 2022. In addition to the interlocal agreement, JAG is requiring certifications and assurances by the chief executive of the applicant government to be signed by the mayor as part of the application process. If accepted, the funding breakdown would break down as follows. Approximately, excuse me, exactly $30,860.55 for law enforcement equipment and $954.45 for personnel costs and overtime for training on NIBR's compliance. The law enforcement equipment that would be purchased would be replacement of rifles for our special weapons and tactics team. As with any tools and equipment, things eventually wear out and need to be replaced. And we would be seeking to do that. The second part of that, which takes a little bit of understanding, is the overtime for training on the NIBR system. If you're familiar with the uniform crime reporting methodology currently used by the FBI, that will go by the wayside in the near future. And we will be participating in what is called the National Incident-Based Reporting System. The key component of that is this. Under UCR, in each criminal event that takes place, only one crime is counted. So for instance, if you have a robbery, but yet there are several other smaller or perceived less important crimes that occur in that event, only the robbery is counted. Under the NIBR system, each event, each crime within a particular event would be counted. The importance of that is this. It may appear in the coming years that a large leap in the amount of crime that occurs everywhere, not just in the City of Sparks, but nationwide, will appear to have gone forward geometrically. That's not necessarily the case. It really is simply just an accounting methodology. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Questions or comments for the chief? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion. Mr. Dare?
I move to approve the interlocal agreement, AC 5612, with the City of Reno, Washoe County, and the City of Sparks for the management and disposition of the 2019 Justice Assistance Grant program award. Good job.
Mr. Abbott?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, any further discussion? Chief, when will this take effect? Once you get the money and then how long after that?
This is, this is actually the first phase of the project. So we need to sign on to the interlocal agreement before the grant can be applied for. And when that occurs, we will bring that, of course, back to the council at the correct time.
Okay, great. All right, we have a motion. Second, any further discussion? Passes unanimously. It's okay. Okay, nine point four, Chris Cobb. Consideration discussion and possible authorization for staff to seek additional grant funding from various foundations in the estimated amount of $220,000 to assist in the design and construction costs of the Sparks Marina All Abilities Playground.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. And please, before you be here again for discussion and possible consideration, to allow staff to seek additional funding in the amount around $220,000 for the full design and construction of the All Abilities Playground at Sparks Marina. The estimate is based on what we're seeing as far as what's going on in the market for this size and square footage that we're looking at. I have done a little legwork just reaching out to a couple foundations in the state just to inquire about their process and would something of this nature fit into the complement of what they've done awards. Feedback I've got is very positive. So I feel very confident in our abilities to get this additional funding. And if something were to occur, we could always scale back and look at what we're actually doing. But I think the size and scope, to give you an idea, Parra Playground, the All Abilities there is about 9,800 square feet. And it looks like we'd be just over that, about 10,000 square feet in layout at the Sparks Marina. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions or comments? Chris, does the $220,000 and the $80,000 donation get us there or how short?
Mm-hmm. I believe right there with what's included in our CIP at 550, that puts us right in the mark where we need to be.
Okay, so we do have 550?
Yes, sir. And our CIP allocated from the city through the CIP process.
Okay, super. Mr. Anderson?
Just wanted to compliment you, Chris, and likewise the whole department for working on this. Tens of thousands of people enjoy the Marina. And as Mr. Dare said, it is the gem of the city. And what a great way to add to it by making this All Abilities Playground available for them. So thank you for what you guys have done. Likewise, the work that you've gone in, looking at what's working well, what's not working so well, and tailoring this to be the best program. And then to have groups like Rotary come together to help this come to be is awesome. So thank you for your work.
I appreciate it. You know, I feel very fortunate. This will be the second opportunity I have to build one of these. I've had some great opportunities to build some really exciting projects here at the city. But you know, this and Parra are probably the two most important that I'll ever be involved with here at the city.
Parra has been pretty darn successful.
Extremely successful. And knowing what goes on at the Marina, what's occurring at the Marina, what we're seeing with the growth, the access it provides to everybody in the region, this is a needed project. And it's not only going to be for Sparks, for the entire region. So I can't thank you guys and our leadership enough for the opportunity to be a part of it again.
Mr. Dare?
I just want to know, when it comes to raising the 220,000 to grant, I know I've heard a little bit about some of the grants. What does this open, what if there's another group like Lions Club or someone out there who wants to help? Or who knows? Is there, is there a way that you're opening those doors? Is there something, a way that we can be helpful and just if people ask us or any of that information?
If there was somebody that would contact one of the council, absolutely. If you could put them in direct contact with our Parks and Rec Director, Tracy Dominguez, or myself. I have a list of foundations that we've been very successful with through the recreation program and some of our adaptable programs. There's also a great program at the state, the Land Water Conservation Fund. So that we've got some great opportunities here. And like I said, I've reached out to a few just to inquire what we're doing there. Totally fits what they look to fund. And they're looking forward to us being a part of that process if I'm authorized tonight.
Mr. Lawson?
I'm going to encourage you to reach back out to the Rotarians. There's a couple of them there in the city. They sit on foundation boards that might give a donation there too. So reach back out to Mike Day and Don Welsh because he might put you in contact with the rec guy who says, here, here's a big check for you.
I will be pounding the pavement in every direction, gentlemen. I will not let this fail.
Chris, so once we get all the money and the, assuming we have it and the permitting, when can we start building this thing?
You know, the money will be a big determining factor. I think if we were on the worst-case scenario, I know the state's process, if I was to get a bunch of funding and I had to, I think the one that's out there through the Land Water Conservation Fund, you do applications in the spring and they do the award in the fall. Worst-case scenario, I think we'd be breaking ground probably this time next year. If not sooner.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions or comments? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
Move to authorize staff to seek additional grant funding from various foundations in the estimated amount of $220,000 to assist in the design and construction costs of Sparks Marina All Abilities Playground.
Okay, I have a motion. Looking for a second. Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Chris. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, nine point five is Brian. Consideration discussion and possible approval of a construction contract, AC 5614, for the Golden Eagle Regional Park Synthetic Turf Replacement, Fields 10 through 15 in fields.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. For the record, my name's Brian Kason, Capital Projects Manager for the City of Sparks. And of course, I've got Chris Cobb here, the Parks Development Coordinator, sitting next to me. Ultimately, we've got this project for Fields 10 through 15 for replacing the infields out of Golden Eagle Regional Park. These circles show basically the location of where the fields are going to be replaced. Back in February of this year, as you might recall, we had a, an agenda item come before you that where we rejected bids for Fields 10 through 15, which is just the pinwheel part of it. In this project, we added one more field. With that one, we only received one bid. It was over budget. So ultimately, Chris has done a fantastic job over the last few months working with the turf manufacturers along with our consultant to try and come up with a better plan going forward. So three items that rose to the top were, first of all, the field access. And whenever we did the multi-use fields, seven and eight, you have to access the fields over the grass and that causes damage to the grass. So to minimize damage and to minimize costs in that respect, Chris went out and got a contractor to install turf stone pavers, which are an open-cell paver that allows grass to grow up between the pavers and allow us to not have to move any sprinkler systems, but still maintain access to the fields, not only for this project, but for future maintenance of the fields. Secondly, was working with the turf manufacturers to provide a specification that allows more competition for the bid. Basically going through and we want to ensure we have good quality fields that last a long time and hold up to the use that occurs out there. But working with them to try and open up the competition a little bit. And then lastly, is the mobilization cost. The previous bid, we were, we were trying to minimize downtime, but in the end, it was just being cost prohibitive. We were going to have them just close down one to two fields at a time throughout the process and get those completed in their entirety. This one, we're going to allow them, if approved, to start construction November 25th and close, we're going to close down all six fields for a short amount of time to allow them to go in and remove the turf on the infields and prepare the surface. And then, as of January 10th, we have them having at least one field completed and with the turf installed and then releasing that back to the Parks Department. And then after that, in two-week increments, doing the same thing with the rest of the fields and with the anticipated completion date of March 20th. So in the end, we did end up getting four bids in this particular bidding process and we got a cost that was below budget. And by doing that, we also added one field. So we're below budget and we added an additional field from what we had previously. So FieldTurfUSA was the lowest responsive bidder. Their bid was $688,737.12. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is that the, is that the group that did the last field?
No, they did the regional. So I feel pretty excited that we're teaming up with FieldTurf again. They got a really neat product that they've developed specifically for baseball and softball. As well as they're teamed up, one of their subcontractors is Q and D. Who built Golden Eagle originally.
Okay. Excuse me. Questions or comments? Seeing none, looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, I'm glad you made that motion and, you know, playing a little softball. I got a kickball game out there tonight, so you will be thrilled to hear this. So I move to approve a construction contract, AC-5614, for the Golden Eagle Regional Park Synthetic Turf Replacement, Fields 10 through 15 in fields project of FieldTurfUSA, Inc. in the amount of $688,737.12.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second. Mr. Dare?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Nine point six, Mindy. Consideration discussion and possible approval to participate in an agreement, AC 5618, negotiated by Nevada Health Partners with Maxxer Plus Limited to administer the pharmacy benefit for the City of Sparks.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Mindy Falk, Human Resources Director. For your consideration today is a new participation agreement for a new pharmacy benefit administrator. The city has a self-funded group plan, which means that the city pays the first $300,000 of any insurance claim. And to do that, we need contracts with providers. And the city groups up with Nevada Business Group on Health, and that is a group of public and private employers who get together to get insurance contracts. And we do this because you get a cheaper cost for more lives. So the city's current vendors for pharmacy are WellDyne, which is our current pharmacy benefit administrator, which are the people who answer the phones and pay the claims, True Choice, which is the network, and then Gateway. And they are the rebate aggregator. And the rebate aggregator is what you would think, that just like when you buy a toaster and you put in a coupon to the manufacturer and you get 20 bucks back. That's how it works for pharmacy as well. So all of these contracts expire on December 31st of this year. There was a contracting committee from Nevada Business Group on Health, which I was a member of, and we did an RFP. We had eight responses and four people, four groups who did presentations. Maxxer was chosen as the pharmacy benefit administrator for a couple different reasons. One, many of the groups were having customer service issues with WellDyne. The other is it presented a better value. The pricing was better than the WellDyne current contract as well as it had enhanced technology for our members and for the city staff. The decision was made to keep True Choice and Gateway the same because they were performing as expected or even better. The cost of this is a little complicated because claims utilization is how you figure out cost in insurance claims. And that is the number of claims you have in any given year plus the cost per claim. And all those things generally and will change from year to year. But we did have a consultant do a cost analysis and use 12 weeks of data. If the city had the exact same claims utilization, it would be a 23% decrease in cost. Now, that is really unlikely that we'd have the exact same claims history from year to year, so the actual cost is going to vary. What does this mean for our employees? The employees will not have to change pharmacies. They'll be able to use the same one they use now. There's still 24/7 customer support. And then anybody who has some disruption from this change, HR and Maxxer is going to reach out to them and help minimize that as much as possible. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Okay, questions or comments? Mr. Anderson?
So Mindy, when you're, the group gets together to make these decisions and try and figure out which direction we're going to go, do you also look at nationwide groups that join together or even state purchasing, things like that? Is that something that you guys consider?
We don't consider state, this is sort of a state purchasing group, get that out, in a way that the City of Reno is on it, Washoe County is part of this group, Douglas County School District, and then a number of private employers. So we didn't look at the state's contracts necessarily, but we did look at national providers as well. And this was the best option for the groups.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dare?
I know you said you'd work with anybody who's kind of finding themselves in a difficult place, but we know we probably have a few that are difficult to begin with just because depending on people's health, it's all very personal very much. Have you been able to, I just, I imagine we say yes to this or whatever. We move forward and all of a sudden, you have a line of a few people. Are they aware of any that's going on? Have we looked at some of the problems that are going to be caused and how to mitigate that? Just because it's so personal to people, one day is going to make a huge difference. One week, if it takes that, to get them on right. It's just a very big deal to shift for some of them because I've seen some of the pharmacy go from one cost to a crazy amount depending on the provider.
So we have not individually reached out yet. Part of it is to do that, we have to sign the agreement and have confidential agreements. So we need your approval to do that. But once we have that, we are going to do that. And we agree that working with people as soon as possible, especially there are many people on medications that can't have interruptions. So that is definitely our number one goal is to work on those first.
And if this is approved today, does this start immediately? Is this like a three-month window? Does it give us time to ramp in, ramp out?
It's January 1st.
It's January.
So we'll be with WellDyne until December. So we have, we have some time to work through the transition.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Looking for a motion? Mr. Anderson?
Move to approve participation agreement, AC 5618, with Maxxer Plus Limited and authorize a city manager to execute the participation agreement for this service.
Okay, I have a motion. Looking for a second. Mr. Lawson? Okay, we have a motion. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Mindy. Okay, nine point seven, Lisa. Lisa. Consideration discussion, possible approval to join an existing City of Reno agreement AC-5613 with NCR Payment Solutions.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Lisa Hunterman, your city clerk, for the record. I am here today presenting two separate agenda items that are very closely related in terms of the way the City of Sparks handles debit card, credit card, and e-check payment processing within the Customer Service Division. My first item is my recommendation that the City Council authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with NCR Payment Solutions for all of our payment processing for debit card, credit card, and e-check transactions. We would be utilizing a jointer provision with this agreement, joining on to an existing City of Reno contract. Currently, the City of Sparks contracts with two separate payment providers for credit card, debit card, and e-check processing. The first provider handles all of our customer service counter-related functions, sewer payments, business licensing, building permits. And the second provider handles our online transactions through our Acela Regional Portal for business licensing and building permits. Both contracts for these providers expire October 31st. Anytime that the city accepts a payment for a credit card, debit card, or e-check payment, it costs the City a fee. Those fees add up, and over the last 12 months, the City of Sparks has paid roughly $209,000 in processing fees within the Customer Service Division alone. I did an analysis of the same time period, same 12 months' worth of payments with the proposed provider, and we would have shown a savings of roughly $35,000 or 16.7%. I do expect that the city will continue to pay an increasing amount of fees for processing credit card, debit card, and e-check payments. However, the rate that NCR is able to provide us is 2% plus 25 cents per transaction for credit card and debit cards, and a flat 50 cent per transaction rate for e-check payments, which is lower overall than what we were paying before. So we will continue to see a savings in the amount that we pay, even if we're paying a little bit more over time. NCR will also provide us with up-to-date equipment that is fully modernized to accept Apple Pay, Android Pay, Tap to Pay, and chip payments, which has actually been requested quite often from not only our customers, but our council members. Again, it is my recommendation to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with NCR Payment Solutions, and that concludes my presentation on this item, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
You're not going to answer any questions?
I said I'm happy. I'm not going to.
Mr. Abbott.
I was just more of a comment. I'm definitely thrilled that we have Apple Pay and Android. Like, I only carry one credit card anymore, because I live on, I carry my virtual wallet as my millennial self, and it's awesome. It's just a lot of my friends are in the same boat anymore, and so I think it's looking forward. And my question on the Apple Pay and Android, is that still the same 2%?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott.
I move to approve joining the existing contract AC-5613 between the City of Reno and NCR Payment Solutions FLLC for the provision of payment processing services at a rate of 25 cents per credit or debit card transaction plus 2% of the total transaction amount in a rate of 50 cents per e-check transaction, authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second. Mr. Anderson.
A second motion?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Oh no, I can use my Apple Pay now.
Okay, passes.
You have an Android phone, so no.
You can use Android.
It passes unanimously.
You're losing control, sir.
I know. It passes unanimously. 9.9. This is you again. Consideration discussion, possible approval of our three-year contract AC-5611 with Gray Quarter Incorporated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Lisa Hunterman, your city clerk, for the record. As we just discussed the processing of payments, now what I would like to do is discuss with you how those payments integrate and translate over into Acela, which is our regional business license and permitting platform. To give you a little bit of a background, when a payment is made, it goes through the payment processor, and that payment processor manages the transaction between the merchant, which is the City of Sparks, and the financial institution, which would be Visa, MasterCard, Discover Card. What that payment processor does not do is communicate directly or interact directly within the Acela regional platform. This lack of communication, per se, has caused roughly 16 to 20 hours of staff time spent weekly reconciling payments made from our Acela online access into the customer accounts, resolving payment issues, incomplete payments that may come in. A lot of time has been spent trying to rectify these instances. Now, as a regional approach, Washo County issued a request for proposal on behalf of the region, looking for a full solution payment processor who was able to actually process the payment and integrate directly within Acela, and they found that there was none to be had. Gray Quarter Incorporated submitted a separate proposal to the region as a standalone software solution that promised to resolve payment errors regardless of what the payment processor, which payment processor was being used. The regional partners did a demonstration with Gray Quarter and found that Gray Quarter basically would be the manager of the transaction between the payment processor and Acela itself. Gray Quarter is also an Acela preferred provider, and they have worked with Acela in managing those transactions before. The Acela Regional Coordinating Committee agrees and recommends that each agency that is currently within the regional platform contract out with Gray Quarter. The fees for the City of Sparks for a three-year contract with Gray Quarter is a one-time fee of $3,750 for setup and implementation, and then a $9,338 fee on an annual basis for a total of $31,764 over the term of three years. Adding Gray Quarter will improve staff efficiency, I'm sorry, improve staff efficiency will allow us to have better reporting of incoming payments into our Acela platform, will provide a more user-friendly payment experience for the customers, a highly customizable shopping cart integration within Acela, and allow each agency within the regional platform to choose their own payment provider. It is my recommendation that the City Council approve the three-year contract with Gray Quarter Incorporated in the amount of $31,764 to provide integration between the payment processor and Acela. We feel that using Gray Quarter to do the integration of the payment processing is something that's just been missing within our setup and a long time coming. With that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay, looking, any questions? Mr. Dare.
So just putting together what we just did in this, it would seem that we still have a small savings on all of our transactions when it's said and done, and then we'll have a bigger savings when it just comes to our staff. It's what we're kind of, if you just throw it all in a barrel, right?
Absolutely.
And then I'd also say that, looking at this, this is nothing to do with how much comes through. This is a flat fee, so there doesn't, we could have millions come through or not, but we're going to be paying that $9,000 that they're talking about here.
Correct. It is a $9,000 fee on an annual basis regardless of the number of transactions that are done.
Gotcha. And, okay, very good. I'm ready to make a motion when you need to, sir.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Looking for a motion, Mr. Dare.
I move to approve a three-year contract AC-5611 with Gray Quarter Incorporated to provide interface development, implementation, and maintenance of integration services between the payment processor and Acela, citizen access in an amount not to exceed $31,764. Good job.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second. Mr. Anderson.
A second motion.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Lisa.
You guys.
Okay, move on to 9.9. Danny's not here, so who's doing that? Armando. Consideration discussion and possible action to direct the city manager to initiate changes to Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to permit tattoo parlors in additional zoning districts. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith, members of the City Council. I am Armando Anelis, the Assistant Community Services Director. Per request from Councilman Abbott on August 12th, this agenda item is intended to provide the City Council the opportunity to direct staff to initiate the preparation of amendments to the zoning code to allow tattoo parlors in additional zoning districts. This map on the screen in the green shows the three zoning districts where tattoo parlors are currently permitted. They are the mixed-use commercial, the C2 or general commercial, and the tourist commercial districts. In general, they are located on the west end of the city, along Prater and McCarran, and then in a few select spots further north. Prior to adoption of the 2015 zoning code, tattoo parlors were not categorized as a separate use, but rather were included in the personal services use category. And personal services today are allowed, in addition to these three zoning districts, in five additional zoning districts. They are the professional office, which is in the blue, portions of the industrial area, the mixed-use residential district, the mixed-use downtown Victorian Square District, and industrial. So in terms of options, the city has numerous options with regard to where to allow tattoo parlors in additional districts if the council is so inclined. They could be added in potentially all five of these additional zoning districts, or just some of them. Another consideration is whether to add some use criteria, for example, with regard to hours of operation, or possibly conditional use permit process requirement if they're to go into additional zoning districts. Today, staff is simply asking for direction to proceed with the code amendments, and if given that direction, then we will bring you back recommendations at a future council meeting. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, any questions or comments? No, I would just ask, I don't see why we don't make everything just the personal services zoning. And that's for me, and I don't vote, but that's my, that's my personal opinion. Mr. Dare.
One thought I did have is, depending on where it's at, I do think it's something we want to look at, the timing of these, because I've seen in some areas when there are 24 hours, that definitely does change that, and depending on the zone it's in, it's probably good for us to have a look at it, would be my thought, that it comes back. So there's some use language in there of some sort getting approved, and not just an automatic, so we're putting some, saying yes to something now that we're going, oh no, we said yes to something we don't want over there, so. And it's not just, I want to say this, it's not that we're saying a tattoo parlor, no, we're saying the timing of it, maybe not a 24-hour or what, you know, because some of them have done that, I've seen that in other places.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you for looking into this. I think this is something that was definitely needing a change in our city. I personally agree with what the mayor said as far as it falling under personal services with a caveat of hours of operation, because I do think that's about the only thing that could cause an issue if they're open at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, potentially next to a residence or something. But that's the direction I'd like to see. Thank you.
Mr. Abbott.
I'll make a comment, then I can make a motion, but I think it's just like a beauty salon. It's pretty similar. People come up, they take out the services behind the door. You know, I don't have any tattoos, but it's a fairly common thing anymore for tattoo shops, so I'm ready to make a motion if anyone else.
Well, one more comment for me. You know, even beauty salons, they're under personal services, they, a lot of those people who work in the salons are private contractors, so they make their appointments, sometime they're there at 10:00 at night, and I don't see, I don't see them working till 2:00 in the morning, but so just be careful when you limit the hours of operation. Okay, Mr. Abbott.
Yep. I move to direct the city manager to initiate changes to Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code by preparing code amendments permitting tattoo parlors in additional zoning districts.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second. Mr. Dare.
I'll second that with a quick comment.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Dare.
So we can all get a big Sparks tattoo, I was thinking, together.
Yeah, yeah.
So I second that, that's all I have to say.
Okay, if we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Where would you put your tattoo?
I don't want to talk about that, sir.
I'm looking at the antiques, go on, I'm not going to attach that. Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, or please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 9.10. First reading. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lisa.
This is the first reading of Bill Number 2766, an ordinance to rezone a site approximately 17,043 square feet in size located at 1620 Pyramid Way, Sparks, Nevada, from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to C2 General Commercial, PCN 19-0027.
Public hearing of this bill, Number 2766, will, well, this bill, for its consideration and possible approval, will be held at the regular city council meeting scheduled for Monday, October 28, 2018. Okay, we're going to move on to public hearing items. 10.1. Allison. Second reading, public hearing, discussion, and possible action on Bill Number 2765, in ordinance amending Chapter 5.28 of the Sparks Municipal Code.
Thank you, Mayor Smith and City Council. For the record, I'm Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick, and I am very pleased to be here today to talk to you about the second reading and public hearing of Bill Number 2765, which would create two new alcoholic beverage license types. Those would be a growler license and a caterer's alcoholic beverage license. This bill came about because at the August 12th city council meeting, Councilman Abbott asked staff to look into allowing bars and pubs to fill growlers. And if you don't know what a growler is, Mr. Sendal will pass one down the line right now. He's also passing, he's also passing down a...
Where's the straw? Paper.
The second item there, well, the first is a glass growler. Growlers are typically either glass or metal. The smaller item is what's called a crowler, which is a 32-ounce metal can that's filled with beer and then mechanically sealed, and then you can pop it open like a soda can. Unlike a soda can, though, it is meant for sharing. Looking, when staff looked into Councilman Abbott's requests from that August 12th meeting, staff identified two holes in our current alcoholic beverage licensing scheme. One was that only manufacturers are permitted to fill growlers under our current code. And two is that licenses for alcoholic beverages are tied to a specific location, which makes it illegal for caterers operating at different locations in the city to serve alcohol along with the food that they're preparing and serving. This bill would fill both of those holes by creating these two new license types. Again, the first is a growler license, which would only be available to holders of on-premises or package licenses. It would allow holders of those license types to fill growlers and crowlers. No background check would be required to get a growler license because it's only available to entities that have already been licensed and gone through that background check process. Manufacturers would be exempt from this growler license requirement because they are already allowed to fill growlers and crowlers under our current code. The caterer's license would allow alcohol service in conjunction with food at catered events at different locations around the city. A background check would be required for a caterer's alcoholic beverage license unless the applicant already has a different kind of alcohol license. For example, if a restaurant also provides off-site catering services and has an alcoholic beverage license tied to the restaurant, a new background check would not be required for that caterer's license. Under both license types, bartenders would be required to get work permits as with any other alcoholic beverage license in the city. Staff recommends that City Council approve this bill, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, bring it back to council for action, looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott.
Yes, gladly, we'll make this motion. I move to approve Bill Number 2765, an ordinance amending Chapter 5.28 of the Sparks Municipal Code by adding provisions allowing some alcoholic beverage licenses to fill growlers and crowlers, allowing alcohol service by caterers, and providing other matters properly related that are...
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second. Mr. Lawson.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Seeing none, please vote. Thank you, Allison, passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, 10.2, this is Kevin, second reading, public hearing, discussion, and possible action on Bill Number 2764, amending Section 13.24.020 and 13.24.030 of the Sparks Municipal Code. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the record, Kevin Porter, utility manager, and that's a tough act to follow, I do not have a storm drain or sewer pipe to pass along the dais this afternoon. The bill before you with this, the second reading of this item will amend Title 13 specifically the sections that address connection fees, both residential and commercial. For the background, if you will recall, in December of 2018, council approved rate increases to the connection fees, among other rates in Title, excuse me, in Title 13. The rate increase that was approved was 30%, a flat rate, and that 30% rate was subsequently applied to our financial billing system, so the connection fees that have been billed out since that rate increase approved went into effect on January 1st are the correct 30%. The fees that made it into our Title 13 code were slightly off on the connection fee. One was 29.5% on the residential side, and actually 32.1% on the commercial side. What this bill will do will amend those connection fees in Title 13, and, and we will be left with a clean 30% increase on connection fees in Title 13. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, questions or comments? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action, looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson.
Move to approve Bill Number 2764, amending Sections 13.24.020 and 13.24.030 of the Sparks Municipal Code.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Mr. Dare.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Kevin. Okay, 10.3, Allison, consideration, consideration and possible approval of a five-year extension of the Sierra Pacific Power Company DBA Nevada Energy Natural Gas Franchise Agreement. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. Again, for the record, I'm Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick. If there aren't any objections, I'll address Item 10.3 regarding the natural gas franchise agreement and 10.4 regarding electric service together, because they are very similar, but each item does require a separate public hearing and a separate motion. The city has franchise agreements with Sierra Pacific Power Company doing business as Nevada, as NV Energy for natural gas and electric service. Those agreements concern access to city right-of-way and other areas for NV Energy's infrastructure. The service itself that is provided by NV Energy is largely governed by the state through the Public Utilities Commission. The city collects 5% franchise fees under both agreements, which is the maximum allowed by state law. In fiscal year 19, that amounted to almost $5 million between the two agreements, $1.15 million under the natural gas agreement and $3.85 million under the electrical agreement. That money gets distributed to the road fund, the general fund, and the parks maintenance fund. These agreements require NV Energy to request an extension of the agreements at least two years before the agreement is set to expire. Both agreements are currently set to expire on April 23 of 2021. NV Energy timely requested an extension of both agreements, so that's why we're here so far in advance, is because the agreements require NV Energy to ask far in advance. If approved, the agreement's terms would be extended until April 23 of 2026. Staff recommends approval of both extensions to maintain natural gas and electrical service in the city, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Linda, did you want to say anything?
I sure do.
Come on down.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Smith, members of the council, Linda Viset, Government Affairs, Executive for NV Energy. Let's introduce real quick a couple of their people with me from left to right. Chris Hoffman, our Director of Grid Operations and Reliability. We have Chief Mark Reagan, who is our Fire Mitigation Specialist, and Kristin Sabidi, who's in Corporate Communications, so they're here to answer any questions. But I do want to thank the city attorney's office for working with us and bringing these before you, and would agree with the representations made here today, and ask that you do approve those five-year extensions of both the gas and electric franchise.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Questions, comments, Mr. Lawson.
So, Linda, tell us, for us, those of us who have friends and family in California, and obviously this is a big deal right now, is what's going on with the power shut-offs and turning off service to millions of people. Tell us how it's different for a state of Nevada and our particular, our franchise versus what's happening with California.
I'd love to tell you, but that's why I brought Chris and Chief Reagan, I think they can, actually Chief Reagan was just down in California last week on the ground in Auburn, so we'll bring them both up.
I think this is more to put our, our people's mind at ease that we do things differently here in Nevada.
Absolutely. Just like a lot of other things, question three, et cetera, you dug into it and got good information.
Welcome. Just give us your name on the record.
Chris Hoffman, NV Energy, Grid Reliability. So, I think you posed a very good question. First and foremost, let me tell you guys that the City of Sparks is actually not located with any of our, inside any of our Tier 2 or tier escalated Tier 3 fire zones. We worked with UNR and DRI to identify all of those zones, so first and foremost that. Secondly, from an aspect of how PG&E made their decision, we're built to a higher snow load, higher wind load type environment, so we're designed for that, whereas a lot of areas down in PG&E's service territory are not built to that design. So, with that in mind, there's multiple factors that actually come into play when we make a decision, or a decision is made for a public safety outage management turnoff, or something along those lines. Those being wind gusts, red flag days, temperature, relative humidity, as well as working with the National Weather Service, seeing what they're seeing, first, working with first responders, our chief as well, and making a decision from that aspect. So, it's not just a, hey, we see higher winds, we're gonna cut power. It's not something along those lines. As well as, first, one of the biggest pieces in that, I'm sorry, is our energy release component, the ERC, which we go out and sample fuels on a weekly basis in our higher-risk areas to get an actual number. Does that answer your question in a really long engineering sort of way?
I think it's important to notice, to note the difference, and that was something that I didn't realize till I did a little bit of homework, but it's important to know that you just don't turn the power off, because the weather forecaster who's 50% wrong has said there's gonna be a high wind today.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Would you like to add anything, sir?
No, Chris covered it. We did send a team over to Auburn area to help mitigate the issues they were having over there. A team of us also took notes, so if we ever did have to pull the trigger where we would have to de-energize, we have notes, so we didn't have the issues that we're having over there.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from the council? Mr. Dare.
I have a question when it comes to some of the legislation that came through talking about how we have to get to solar and some of the different areas, we have, we're talking 2026, our franchise goes to, right, is that what we said? So, the next few years, the one thing that I, I just wondered, what kind of stuff do we anticipate, because you won't be necessary in front of us to ask us for this for a little while, what kind of stuff do we anticipate in the next years to come when it comes to the percentage that the state's requiring that we are on, or we do a lot, we do a better job with solar, wind, or whatever the, whatever the heck we're gonna do? How does that fit into your, into your aspect for the next few years?
So, there's several things, we are working towards 100% renewable energy, and it's getting more cost-effective all the time with new technologies, so we are working towards that. There's, I think we're over 30% now, and we continue to grow in the amount of renewable resources that are part of our portfolio, and always keeping in mind keeping rates low and for customers. And then, kind of short-term, there was another legislative initiative which brings on community solar, which allows in, in your jurisdiction, identification of areas where constituents may not otherwise have an opportunity to put solar on their apartment complex, or have that ability, and we're just getting out with that program now, so we'll work with, maybe it's your public works folks, or whoever you want to have involved, if you have a sustainability manager, we'll work in identifying locations in Sparks, so you can get some more local renewables.
No, that's good. It's been a joy to always work with you guys, obviously. We thank you for never turning off our energy so far, don't do so. We like, we like that it stays on. No, but it's a joy to work with you guys, and in the future, I just know, we do have a lot of, it's interesting, it seems like a lot is changing on this front, and you guys know it better than we do, and so we just, it'd be great to continue to hear from you how that affects us, how it affects our, how we can get that word out, and help get that word out to our citizens and everything, but it just seems I've been meetings a lot, and there's a lot of conversation about the change of how maybe things are gonna happen in the future, so.
Yeah, they follow it closely and get out ahead of it. I know they've been, you know, years ago started looking at things like grid hardening to protect the system, and we do appreciate the partnership with Sparks and appreciate going forward with that, and supporting your community, whether it's events like the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament, or...
Yay, this Friday.
Yes, and projects like the Veterans Memorial Plaza. We really like that opportunity to support you and constituents and businesses here.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Bill, come on down. Be careful now.
Won't fall down this time.
Welcome, Bill.
My question to the...
Bill, give us your, your full name.
Oh, Bill Wagner. Anyway, my question to these folks here is, do they have any concerned areas that you're concerned about?
As in, with, with respect to the fire?
Yes.
Yeah, we absolutely do, we have some, sorry, we absolutely do, we have identified multiple Tier 3 areas, that's more likely, that's more of our Lake Tahoe, east side of Lake Tahoe area, and some of our transmission in the California area.
So, you're gonna be working on taking care of that?
We absolutely are, we're working in the process on grid hardening that, as Linda spoke to earlier. What that means is we're replacing steel, or our wood poles with steel structures. We're also working to put in what we call tree wire, it's for lack of a better term, an insulated wire, so if a tree brushes up against it.
It won't ignite, then, right?
Correct.
Good deal, thank you. Thank you, folks.
You're always good for a question or two, Bill. Appreciate it. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action. Looking for a motion? Mr. Dare.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the five-year extension of the Electrical System Franchise Agreement A3355, sorry, A3355.
We're on 10-3 first.
I'm gonna do the wrong one.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have, 10-3 first, I'm sorry.
Right there in front of me. Almost, it's okay. I move to approve a five-year extension of the Natural Gas Franchise Agreement A3356 with Sierra Pacific Power Company DBA NV Energy Natural Gas.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Mr. Abbott.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Now, we'll move on to 10.4. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action, looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson.
Move to approve the five-year extension of the Electrical System Franchise Agreement A3355 with Sierra Pacific Power Company DBA NV Energy.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Mr. Anderson.
A second?
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. It passes unanimously, thank you. You guys do a great job, we appreciate it, we appreciate working with you. Thanks, Linda. Okay, there is no planning or zoning, public hearing, or action items, so we'll move to comments. I'll open up the public comment. Is anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? This is the last public comment period. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Comments from the mayor, city council, and city manager. Mr. Lawson.
So, we have, we just redid our zoning and ordinances on where we put things in the City of Sparks in 2014, and very comprehensive update. Obviously, there's pockets where we missed those, so I'm requesting that the city manager bring back an item for the city council's consideration to potentially direct the city manager to review permitted uses, specifically internet-based retail and auto-oriented uses, as well as locational criteria for signage in the MU zoning district. And then, one more item, Mr. Manager, I'd like to see if there's a way, while we're applying for grants for the All Abilities Park, that we could move some money around and potentially get that thing started earlier than later, so that our citizens can enjoy the All Abilities Park sooner than a year and a half from now. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Dare.
I just want to make sure people are invited to the Nevada Veterans Memorial Dinner on November 7th. It's exciting to see, if you go over to the marina, you'll see the first wave almost done. In about three weeks, you actually will, the fence will leave, and you can go enjoy that, and there'll be a video playing showing what the rest will look like, but our dinner's on November 7th at the Atlantis, and it's something for our whole state, and it's something very special for Sparks, so, awesome.
Absolutely, I concur. Anybody else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.